Meeting to order, Winterfield Town Council meeting to order. Today is November the 8th and the time is seven o'clock. Our invocation will be by Mr. Johnny Moore, Councilman Moore, and then we'll follow with Pledge Allegiance. Could please stand, please?
Let us pray. Good God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this hour. We thank you for our community. We thank you for our staff here at the town of Winterfield. Lord, we just want to thank you for our mayor tonight. We ask you for a special prayer for him also. He is absent tonight. For reading for cause, we ask everyone to put in a good prayer for him also. Lord, let us be on one accord to take care of your town business in his name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Everybody's a turn, face the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I'd like to welcome everyone to the town of Winterfield Town meeting tonight. My name is Ricky Hines. I'm the mayor pro temp, sitting in for Mayor Jackson, as you heard. Mayor Jackson is out tonight, and just say a prayer for him. If you could, please, at this time, if you do have any devices, could you put them on silent for us, please? Thank you. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Is there anything, Terry?
Mayor, members of the council, I believe we do have one item we're going to add under other agenda items, and it has to do with surplus money in the budget. And Councilman Moore asked me to add that. That would be item, other agenda item number three.
Okay. Number three. I have a motion on the floor and a second. Motion made by Mr. Tony Moore, seconded by Councilman Moy. Any questions? Vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Next up, we have a proclamation, and ask Mr. Harvey to read the proclamation, please.
Our proclamation tonight is for Veterans Day, which will be this Thursday, and I know that later in the meeting, Mr. Moore will have some additional information about the ceremony that will be held. Whereas our community has a continuing sense of gratitude to those who have given so much in defense of the freedoms which we all enjoy, continue to enjoy, and whereas, on this patriotic occasion, let us all commit ourselves to the great need of fostering experience, of rededication to the ideals that have served as the foundation of this great country. One nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. Whereas America has called on her men and women in uniform to protect our national security, to advance our national interests, and to preserve our rights and freedoms, and whereas, on Veterans Day, we recognize the men and women of our armed forces who have valiantly defended these values throughout our nation's history. And whereas, on Veterans Day, we also remember those whose sacrifice ended in permanent injury or death, yet their spirit remains in continued preservation of our freedoms and the promise of liberty established as an example of all oppressed persons of the world. And whereas, in honor of these dedicated men and women, we pledge continued defense of our nation so that our sacrifice will stand before the entire world as a tribute to the spirit and determination of people dedicated to the principles of freedom and democracy. Now therefore, the Winterfield Town Council does hereby proclaim November 11th, 2021, as Veterans Day in the town of Winterfield, North Carolina, and calls upon our citizens to observe this day with appropriate manners in honor of veterans, both living and deceased, who have served this country so willingly to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy, to fly the flag and let our veterans know we appreciate their great sacrifice. In witness thereof, I do hereby cause the seal of Winterfield to be affixed this eighth day of November 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Next up, we have our public hearing. Brian Jones, step to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Council members, as always, it's a pleasure to be in front of you tonight. So as stated, we do have two public hearings tonight. The first one's going to be for Holly Grove annexation, Holly Grove Section 2. So let's see, so the applicant or petitioner is Carolina Eastern Homes, they're the developer of the subdivision. It's located out on Church Street Extension, that's south of its intersection with Lori Ellis Road. It's 33 lots on 13.61 acres, and it's 12, zoning district is R 12.5, and that's a conditional district. So our annexation process, as you guys know, is a three-step process, so in the September meeting, the council directed the town clerk to investigate sufficiency. Last month, the public hearing was scheduled, and we're at the public hearing tonight. The adjacent property owners were mail notification of this public hearing on October 26th, and this, the notice of public hearing was published in the day of the reflector on October 27th and November 3rd. You can see here, this is it right here, so the op center's right here, that's Carroll Crossing, Lori Meadows, Lori Ellis Road's up to the north. There's an overlay of the lots, all 33 lots, proposed for annexation. But other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. If there are none, we're ready for the public hearing.
Do the council have any questions for Mr. Jones? If not, I'd like to open the public hearing. If anyone have any oppositions, I'm going backwards. Yes, if anyone have any oppositions against this property, please step forward now. Anyone have any opposition for this property, please step forward now. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
In favor?
In favor of this annexation, correct? All right. Okay, Brian?
Does it need a motion? Okay, I'm sorry.
All right, I had a motion on the floor by Mr. Moore, seconded by Councilwoman Robinson. All in favor, vote by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carry. Thank you. Thank you, Kim.
Yep, so our next public hearing is for zoning text amendment. This zoning text amendment is specifically aimed at the R 10 district dimension requirements. So the applicant is David Evans, Jr. The proposed zoning text amendment per the application, so the request it is in the R 10 district, change the minimum lot width from 80 feet to 70 feet, and change the side yard setback from 10 feet to 8 feet. The other dimensional standards would remain the same. Reason for this amendment proposal per the application is the proposed amendment would allow more flexibility in the design of subdivisions in the R 10 district without compromise of lot area and maximum density. The current ordinance is more conducive to ranch-style homes, which were in vogue at the time of adoption of the ordinance, but are not popular in today's market. So in addition to what the proposed amendment is, staff would also, for consistency's sake, staff would also ask that town council would consider reducing the side yard setbacks in R 8 and R 6 from 10 to 8 feet as well. Just to, it would be just awkward to go from 10, or go to 8 feet, then 10, 10, and I'll show you a little bit more about that as we get further into this. So this is also from the application, so you can see our dimensional requirements would say, you know, front yard setbacks, but here's where it would change from 10 to 8. You got this in your agenda packet, this is just the amendment summary, so this is what it looks like in the ordinance. The strike through is the current language, and the highlighted is the proposed language. So the applicant wants to go from 80 to 70, and 10 to 8 in the R 10 district. What I was talking about for consistency's sake is going in the R 8 and the R 10, go ahead and changing 10 feet to 8 feet, and both of those for the side yard setbacks. So anytime we get a proposed text amendment, we always like to look at, you know, positioned municipalities around us, similarly positioned municipalities around us as far as, you know, size and location, so Aiden's a good one to look at, so you can see, we're not recreating the wheel here. This is kind of a standard practice in their R 10, they're actually a little bit smaller as far as lot width, but they do have an eight-foot side setback. Wake Forest, again, so they actually go smaller, narrower width in the lot width, but they do have eight-foot side setbacks. Wendell, so it's the exact same, they go in the 10,000 square foot, they're actually a little bit narrower, but they do eight-foot side setbacks. There are other municipalities closer to Home, Farmville, and Wilson, they go down to, you know, 8,000 square foot lots with eight-foot side setbacks, and Wilson goes really small with a medium, what they call medium and low density, 4,000, 6,000 square foot lots with 50-foot lot width and five-yard side setbacks. And I show you that just to make sure you guys know that we're not doing something out of the ordinary if you choose to approve the zoning text amendment. But our amendment process, the planning and zoning board unanimously recommended approval of this at their September meeting, and then council, you guys saw it on your agenda, consent agenda last month, to schedule a public hearing for tonight, so the notice of the public hearing was published in the reflector on October 27th and November 3rd, so now council will hold a public hearing. But the proposed text amendment is consistent with similar, and neighboring municipalities and planning staff does recommend approval. So with that, I'll answer any questions you guys have of me. If there are none, we're ready for the vote here.
Anybody have any questions, Brian?
I will note that Mr. David Evans is in the audience as well as Linwood Stroud, so if you've got any questions for the applicant.
If not, I declare the public hearing open. Again, anyone that is against this, please step forward. Anyone that's in favor of this, please step forward. When you come, please state your name and address for our records, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Linwood Stroud, with Stroud Engineering. I'm here representing David Evans, who is also here, if you have any questions for him. I think Brian summed it up pretty well, it just gives us a lot more flexibility in design with the type of houses that are being built this day and time, so with that, I'm just opening up any questions you might have for me.
Don't have any questions, and we appreciate you coming, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I declare the public hearing closed, where it's the pleasure of the board.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, a motion made by Mr. Tony Moore, seconded by Councilman Moy. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Brian. All right. Okay, next up, we have a public comment section coming up. Before you come up, understand that we have a three-minute time limit on our public comments. When you step to the mic, make sure you say your name and your address. So we're going to open up the public comments, and I first here have, right, I have Mr. Robert Simmons, if you would step to the mic, Mr. Simmons.
First, I'd like to explain the difference between a detention basin and a, on the plat map, and a retention basin. In Louisiana, there's no stranger to the danger of excessive rain and flooding. Over the past few years, they experienced a number of tumultuous storms, and many families have lost their homes and lives because of it. For this reason, it's important to understand what stormwater basins are, as well as how they affect your community. Builders are consistently looking for new areas to build communities in, but communities grow, the need for diverting water becomes urgent. Developers should do by adding basins. These basins are meant to collect stormwater and release it at a rate that prevents flooding and erosion. The safety measure is not only to protect subdivisions you're developing from flooding, but also to protect nearby adjacent existing communities. There are two types of basins, a dry detention basin and a wet detention basin, also known as a retention pond. The biggest difference between the two, a detention pond will rain dry until a storm occurs, and a retention pond will have a constant pool of water. Both dry detention and wet detention can be planned in a good way to provide an added amenity to your community, so they are not just protection against flooding. For instance, dry detention can act as a grassy soccer park for kids to play in under normal circumstances, and only during heavy rains, events will hold its water. In both cases, using a three-to-one or four-to-one slope will impede erosion on embankments of both, and allow the banks to easily be maintained by long-term mechanical mowing. None of this is provided on the plat, or even possible with the area provided under the current construction. And we're speaking about the construction of Copper Creek Phase 2. Detention ponds are best used in areas with plenty of land, again, plenty of land, which is not available, and uses a very small slope to divert the water. Water is accumulated in a large collection area, and then slowly drains through the outlet. In some cases, concrete blocks are put in place to slow the water flow and collect debris. Riprap is a procedure being used, shot rock, rock armor, rubble, human-placed rock or other material used to protect against erosion. Dry detention basins are great for surrounding areas because they have a vegetative buffer and can deal with dry or wet conditions. These basins are usually more cost-effective and require a large amount of space, again, large space that's not available.
Mr. Simmons, your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Christine.
Christine Simmons, 329 Crimson Drive. Retention ponds are stormwater control structures that help retain the water and treat contaminated storm runoff. Retention ponds remove pollutants and should be surrounded by a natural vegetation to improve stability and improve the overall look of the basin. Water is sent to the pool using an underground network of pipes and released through outlets to maintain the desired water level. The biggest advantages to using a retention pond are that they're simple to put in, and the water quality is improved, and new habitats are created. On the other hand, these pools can be a drowning hazard, and if not designed properly, can have a negative effect on the water quality and attract mosquitoes, insects, and vermin. Regardless of the basin type, the system should be maintained and should never become blocked or clogged. Obviously, none of these fit the narrative of what is being built behind us. Who would like to have this in their neighborhood, a giant pool of stagnant water, risk for children and animals drowning, insect infestation rampant, until a large storm emerges containing copious amounts of rain flooding properties and homes because we did not step up and accept adequate, but should have demanded appropriate stormwater management? We're proposing a resolution, pump, yes, pump, pump the stormwater to a major canal in the wetland and stop the increasing probability of flooding our properties and homes. Existing systems not maintained thus do not work. Storms are increasingly devastating. We must prepare our systems for overwhelming amounts of stormwater that is inevitable. We have shown the council on October 11th, 2021, what is currently happening to our bordering communities when summer storms tax our stormwater drainage system. Time is here to stop looking into it, but to start doing to it. Digging and mounding a large hole, collecting and directing equal amounts of stormwater from four sources and directing it to that hole as it fills spilling into the bordering wetland, this is simultaneously collecting equal qualities of the same stormwater. Not expecting a devastating reaction is unconscionable. The scenario has been simplified, but the result is unquestionable. The existing flood plain of 10 years, 50, and 100 is archaic and based on farmland, but it's what we must work with. Pumping is costly, time-consuming, coordinating with other agencies, but a necessity to work with our changing environment, but ensuring the property and individual safety are paramount decisions. We strongly encourage the council to pause the work being performed on Copper Creek Phase 2 and consider the alternative. Pumping instead of overflowing this should reduce the chain of events, strain of overflow wetlands, flooding communities, loss of life and revenue. It's occurring to all-
Thank you, Ms. Christine, your time is up. Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Paul Francis.
I'm Paul Francis, and I live at 2867 Little Gem Circle. In the currents around us, Charleston, North and South Carolina is more flooded, roads from rain with no place for the stormwater to go. Charleston Bay is full of sea, levels are rising. I'm a Corps of Engineers, are planning on building a levee to protect the bay and the city. Miami, Florida, this morning, roads flooded from the storm off the west, off the coast, and there are nowhere to put the stormwater to go. Close to home in North Carolina, a recent formed task force hoped to save the main highway on NC-12 on the outer banks from ravaging of storms, erosion, and sea levels rising. Federal, state, and local agencies have formed the NC-12 task force. I could go on with other examples, but the bottom line is, the weather, the water levels are rising, it dumps more storms and everything. Little Gem Circle is in the crosshairs. I know this, I own two and a half acres on the wetlands, where you have the retention pond, which goes into my property. I have water that comes up halfway in my backyard now, and when we do get storms like this, I've only been living here two years, but I have seen my backyard flooded and other neighbors of mine flooded too. I'm thinking of, I've done all sewers up in Massachusetts, obviously I'm not from here, and we've done into farmlands and everything like that. Our runoffs went up higher. We do not use pump stations, but we do use a piping station with basins that at a time level released. High pipes, two 30-inch pipes that run off at different levels. I'm just asking you guys to look into this, because it is getting really bad over there. It's no longer a farmland over there, it's going to be housing. Farmland absorbs, this is not going to absorb, and you're going to go into the wetlands, and it's not going to absorb anymore. We've had four ponds already over there from that retention pond. So I want you guys to strongly recommend and look into everything that we're trying to do. Mrs. Simmons, Mrs. Simmons, the friends of ours and everything, and we've been looking into this hard, them more than others. Our neighborhood is also looking into it. People just want to be aware and want to know what you have to do on all of this. I don't have a quick answer to any of this, but I do have some resolves to some of this. I've been doing this a long time. I own a big construction company. I came down here to retire, been retired, and we're doing construction again. But I would like something, some answers of some sort to kind of tell us what direction we're going to go in, not just fill up a pond and dump it on my land. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
I want to ask Ben to come forward, please.
Okay. Mr. Ben Williams?
He's in the conference room.
Will you step out, please?
Williams, what are your comments about the detention ponds we're referring to?
All ponds in our town are being, are done, designed by the state standards, meet the state requirements for the storms that they are required to be designed for.
What could we do differently to help, to help all neighborhoods? Could we add an additional pipe pumps?
I would not be in favor of pumps. Pumps are another point of failure. Power goes out, pump fails, problem's worse. You could certainly revisit ordinances, require developers to build a pond much bigger. If I'm not mistaken, the pond that is going into Copper Creek is sized for an area larger than the subdivision. It is capable of treating more water than is designed to come to it. It is a slow-release pond. It has riprap. It has an emergency spillway for the large events that exceed its carrying capacity. You, again, could increase your stormwater ordinance and beef it up such that the ponds have to be designed larger than what is required by the state. There are effects of that. We are in a flat area. We are in a hurricane-prone area. There are plenty of neighborhoods that do not have ponds. You could require retrofitting. We have tried to identify areas to put in ponds in fully-developed areas to try to hold some of that water back. You can coordinate on a regional level, like we have tried to do with the county and the city of Greenville, to create larger regional detention-retention facilities. There's not one silver bullet. All are costly, all are timely. Some are moving forward, some are retrofitting.
Thank you very much.
I've got a question. That, I talk about that Y, the people over there in the section, I want to talk about. Those pipes that were put down there, they weren't put down when, I know your ridge was built, am I correct?
I'm sorry, you're talking about the-
Intersection behind the-
Where the three subdivisions all come together?
Where they come together.
There were no pipes, you know, I mean, that's all fields and farm paths, those three, I'm not sure what the lay of the land was originally, but there is a stormwater network in, again, I will have to keep my subdivisions in order, there's a stormwater piping network from summer winds that comes into an open ditch that also intersects the confluence of an open ditch that runs along Little Gem behind Crimson, that then runs down to Swift Creek. There's also a confluence coming down from behind Copper Creek, and the rear yard swales from the first section that was permitted as a low-density with those backyard swales that we have some issues with. So those three intersecting conveyances, that's kind of a conflict point. With Copper Creek Phase 2, the water that is coming from the Phase 1 of Copper Creek will be diverted into the pond currently under construction, so some of that water will be taken off of that section of open canal ditch, what have you, that is running along Little Gem Circle.
Ben, I've got a question. If this neighborhood was being built in the city of Greenville, would there be any different requirements? requirements?
I would have to, I, I know our storm water ordinance is very similar to Greenville's. I would have to take a look at the exact differences, but they-
I'd be interested to know if you could find that out.
Certainly. I, I know we have modeled our models after them due to-
Yeah, and I knew we did, that's why I'm specifically asking that question. I'd like you to go back and just take a look at that and-
Certainly, we can try to identify the differences.
Let me know. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And also too, I've been doing some, looking into this since, this is always on the agenda, storm water. I reached out to North Carolina State, one of their engineers that actually helped design the, I think had the park over, the new park over in Greenville. They was having some erosion problem and he was one of the ones that stepped in. But he's familiar with these retention ponds and we're trying to get him on the agenda, hopefully, next month so that he can talk to us about retention ponds and also storm water and flooding. There's a difference between storm water and flooding. So if you get it from the, I always said from the horse's mouth, it's, it's a lot better than getting it from my mouth that I don't know nothing about this. Now, so I want to bring somebody in that knows something about this, you know, so that we can help, you know, maybe we can figure out what to do and help ease some of our citizens' mind. So, you know, be looking forward to it on our agenda next, next month.
Schedule works.
Yeah, if schedule, if his schedule works, we're going to try and have him here next month to our D-summer meeting.
Okay? That'd be great.
All right. Just, we can't let you address us right now, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, ma'am.
You were saying that you were going to try to get this person in. Do you think that we could allow them adequate time during a meeting to do this? I mean, these citizens are, we've had several groups of citizens to come up to address drainage problems, especially in these three subdivisions. I, I'm afraid, I'm afraid that we would not be allowing our citizens the use of his expertise if we only had it during a meet, our meeting. If we could have it maybe at a different time. I know we got limited, you know, seating and stuff like that, but we would be able to invite more people and more people could hear. And of course, of course, we can do it over, use technology to put it out there for others. Do you think that we could do that? Because this is a big problem over in that area.
It is.
I've been over there, I've seen the backyard, I've seen where they converge and the amount of water going out. I realized that when they moved in, it was not like that and some of them, you know, voiced that and I understand that. But I would like to see as many citizens as possible to come to an understanding about what we can do and be given a voice on this issue.
Don't we tie it up to the council?
If council's inclined to want to schedule what we'll call a workshop for that type of thing?
I, I, I'm, I would make that motion that we schedule a workshop or a meet, you know, meeting on these water drainage problems that we're having, especially in these areas.
It would be informational workshop on storm water?
Information.
On storm water?
On these, these water problems here over in that area.
Because that's a little different issue, I'm not sure the per-
I know, I know terminology gets me, but uh-
No, 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 I'm just saying, I don't know that invite, the person we're looking to invite from NC State can necessarily speak to the issues at hand specifically, but I think this person would be invited to talk about storm water or pond facilities and how they're supposed to work and that kind of thing. We may have to open it up to-
I, I think that they would, that person maybe could answer some technical questions that we're not able to answer. So whatever they were going to speak on, whether it's defining what storm water, what drainage, what Swift Creek Pond, what is Swift Creek?
Swift Creek.
Drainage area, stuff like, whatever questions that they have.
I think it may take more than one person's point, so-
Well, Terry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but we can also ask him if anybody else is in his department will be willing to come to also speak on not just the retention ponds but also the storm water as well. And if we can get that and that would be a-
And there may be some local folks that can speak.
Right, exactly. All right. So that workshop could be beneficial for everything.
Right.
So we can get this, get this out here, okay?
Well, that's my motion.
Thank you.
All right. I have a motion on the table for a workshop and a second. Motion made by Ms. Robinson, second by Mr. Moore. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
And I do ask the citizens to please watch your emails, watch our emails, check your utility bills so that you'll know when these, when that meeting ends. Make sure and share it with your, with the citizens that live in your area. Find that a lot of our citizens are not aware of what's, of things that are going on, but I know these notices are in your utility bills. So please, be sure to keep abreast of that.
All right. We'll also post everything on our social media and website, various outlets. As we are getting ready to enter the holidays, I don't know how the scheduling of everyone who would need to come will work, but we'll certainly make sure to try to get it as soon as possible and then get that information out to everybody.
The last utility bill did not have any insert.
No, you are correct. So we will make sure that once we, assuming the timing, we will get a notice out one way or the other. Whether it's in the utility bill, whether it's a separate insert, whatnot, we'll get it out.
Well, of course, on our side, west side, we don't get your utility bill.
Right.
So we, I encourage you all to make sure you check your, the Facebook page-
Facebook, Twitter.
Twitter, uh-
Nextdoor.
Nextdoor app and, and all of that.
Yes.
So that's for the people on the west side of one of them, because we don't, we don't get the utility-
Or the website, yeah, we're trying to-
Utility bill.
We need to touch base with Kendall Pearmore as well and-
Yes, yes.
Well, I can hear him.
Also, I want to ask you, I think there was a direct concern problem that we have in this area. I know that the one that we are speaking of inviting to give this talk or give us this information is one that's going to give us genetic, but they have a specific concern and a specific interest. Now, I, I, while we were saying that we, we are, we're governed by the state of North Carolina on the ruling government and we are, we need to have someone from, from the state of North Carolina to come down and, and talk to us about this specific problem that we have in this area, that we have allowed the developer to develop this, these ponds in these areas and then to look at, to let them see actually the results and the problems that they are actually having. My question is, is there is anyone specific that we can have to come down here, not just come and talk to us generally, but to attack and to really look at their concerns and the problem that they do actually have in that area?
Councilman Moy, I respect what you're saying. I do think that some of this generalized storm water information and educational information is going to pertain to the folks that are here this evening in addition to the several and many other areas in town where we have similar issues. So to some extent, that can be taken care of with, with this storm water workshop which we desperately need because I do think there's not a, an understanding of some of the different types of storm water challenges that we face. So I do think, and I asked Ben to come back in here to see how we might drill down more specifically into-
Yes.
The problems that have been discussed tonight. I'm not sure that's done at the state of North Carolina level, but Ben, maybe you could help me try to figure out who we pull in to talk about this specific issue.
I mean, we could certainly reach out to some folks at the Washington Regional Office and their storm water group. The state storm water rep has come and did a, they've done an audit of our system, our policies and procedures with regard to reviewing plans and development as well as our own inspection process for our, the couple of ponds that we have on our town facilities. We could certainly reach out to someone that might be able to come. I will remind folks that the storm water regulations in eastern North Carolina have grown and developed and have been kind of a reactionary process over the past few decades. Some of it is stemmed from flooding issues in certain types of areas. They also were a result of nutrient issues from the farming practices and algae blooms that we would get in the fish kills. So certain groups have certain areas of concern. Others, you know, aren't necessarily worried about the buffers and filtering of nutrients. They are more worried about retention and holding back to prevent flooding. There are, as I mentioned, some neighborhoods in this specific area that have no ponds whatsoever. So there's a contributing factor there. We are trying to, in current and future developments, incorporate those ponds. But if you look at the majority of Winterville, most of the development in Winterville does not have a pond.
So I think that's why I wanted to circle back around to say that some of these generalized issues need to be discussed because there are so many other factors in play throughout the entire town that, not to discount what the folks here are talking about tonight, that's very important, but there are many others in other areas of town that could come and have a very similar conversation and we just, I think it's important to have another workshop where we talk about some of the fundamentals of storm water.
Okay, fundamentals, and then what about the specific issues?
Well, I mean, I think Ben just gave a whole litany of, of people we could reach out to.
And they, we, they have a specific issue, you could take that issue and plug it in about six or different areas in town, and then there are areas in town that have specific issues that they don't, they are not experiencing.
That's correct.
So if we drill down in the specifics, we could have a workshop just about every weekend.
Yeah, and again, the guy, his name is Mitch from North Carolina State, and that's what he does for the state of North Carolina.
For the state?
For the state of North Carolina, Mr. Moore. His office, that's what they do, they do the retention ponds. They go in and look at the designs and all that. And so that's why I reached out to him to try to figure this out so we can make sure we're bringing the right information back and get the right information out, you know. You know, always come up when we're here. So I did my homework to reach out and find someone that can answer these questions for the citizens, you know, and they was much obliged to say that they willing to come and do an educational piece. We just need to set up the time to have it done.
And this may take more than one meeting?
Right, oh, yes.
So I, I certainly want to be realistic about the fact that it could take this workshop specifically that we're talking about tonight, individualized meetings, I mean, it definitely is going to take more than one get together to, to address this issue. These things didn't develop overnight and we're not going to fix them overnight.
Well, thank you, Terry, Ben.
Certainly.
Thank you, Ben.
Uh, next to our public hearing, um-
Did we vote on that motion?
Yeah, we did. We voted on it. Uh, next up on our public hearing, we have Ms. Melanie Hines. That's a good name.
Hello, my name is Melinda Hines.
Melinda, I'm sorry.
Paul Cushman and I own and reside at 121 Depot Street. I apologize in advance because there's a lot to try to address in these few minutes. We have been in contact with the church that owns the property, NAPM, and town reps since July specifically regarding the parking lot next to our home that is being used as a construction laydown yard and staging site for the new sewer project. There's been multiple emails, pictures, videos, descriptions of everything that has occurred and is occurring in the parking lot that negatively, negatively impacts our property, our day-to-day home and work life. However, after all this time, we have been given no confidence that any of this will be corrected and have seen no actions taken on issues concerning flooding, contamination, noise, disruption, intrusion, and most of all damages to our home and property that occurred while this property, operation has been on site. There has been no respect for the property line, there has been no respect that this is a residence, nor has there been any accountability or consequences for anyone other than us and our neighbors for obvious site violations, lack of storm water management, performance standards, and mishandling in general. It has come across that it is either not a priority, it is being ignored in hopes that once they're gone, everything will just go away, or simply is passed on as this is not my problem. If this is how current residents are treated, how are we to ever attract new residents to our area? Also, after reviewing our six zoning ordinances for the town of Winterville, it appears the parking lot specifically is not zoned for this type of site and there needs to be assurances that it will never be used in this manner again. There is property much better suited for this type of operation, like the field behind my house which would allow for buffering and separate, separation from the residents. The big question to you is if this was your home, would this be acceptable? In the end, the town approved NAPM's bid and is paying this company to do the work. Somebody approved them to use that property, someone is supposed to inspect that site and protect the residents around it, and if not the town, who? All we are asking for is solutions, protective measures, and accountability for our home and community. Thank you for your time and if you have any specific questions about our complaints, we would be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Hines.
I have a question.
Go back to the-
Mr. Jones. Is this slot by their homes zone commercial or industrial?
So typically, any type of public works project is allowed in any zoning district in town. It's specifically to allow for a town to, to, to make these types of investments in infrastructure and may, be able to maintain it. I will say that typically, planning and zoning does not get involved on the site planning of this stuff because it is permitted by right. So when we're talking about setbacks, when we're talking about structures, principal structure and all that, so typically, they're only allow, they're only regarding principal structures. So we're talking about, if we're talking about equipment or stockpiles or anything like that, those would be a permit that's above our agency and typically on these, we don't self-regulate. So there will be a, a permit, the state agency would be the one enforcing those regulations. So typically, that would be a follow-on, either Washington Regional Office to do soil erosion and, and septication control, and then the project manager on, on site to make sure they're, they're within their site parameters, so.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Harris.
Vail. Good evening. Um, my name is Vadel Harris, 2634 Mill Street, my business. I'm here because Mr. Robert Powell Meter, I was, I was, I've been consulting with him for the past 10 years, been working with him, you know, business consulting, just helping out, he helped me, I helped him, whatever. The 23rd, I helped him do in detail about 12 cars and resulting from the trucks going up and down Depot Street uncovered, which is a DOT violation. Mr. Robert reached out to ask for assistance from numerous people and no one, to my knowledge, because I didn't get that deep into it, responded in a timely manner. So the next day, the 24th, he called me saying, hey, all the cars are dirty, blah, 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 and so forth. We had just did the cars on the 23rd. A day later, all the dirt in the street. They don't clean it up, they push it to the side. So what's going to happen when the wind comes? It's going to blow it right back up onto the cars. I'm really involved because my truck got super dirty. So, and, and I'm also involved because this is my community. I'm in Carroll Crossing, I have a business on Mill Street, so I'm in the community, so I have a voice. Now, on Depot Street, he mentioned setback and typically, these are words that are used as a defense when it doesn't go a certain way. Now, on Depot Street, he mentioned setback, and typically, these are words that are used as a defense when it doesn't go a certain way. So, a setback, it costs money, which is second to time, but if it's not going to be done right, then, you know, there's no need to do it. So, if a setback is going to mean that, okay, someone can come in with solutions and do something correct, then it's not a setback, because if it's not done correctly, it's going to keep going on and on and on in the future, now, or whatever. So, I'm just here for like solutions because we walked down there for diplomacy. So, what happened was, we got brushed away because they told us, "We're not responsible for the truck guys." Well, OSHA has something called competent person. If a truck is going to come, if they're not going to comply, then you have to step up as a competent person.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Robert Powell Meter. All right.
Good evening, my name is Robert Powell Meter. I am a local business owner, I reside in the town of Winterville, and I am an above-average supporter of local government. My agenda for today is that future planning in the town of Winterville, please not allow Depot Street to be used as a designated lay-down yard or construction work in the future due to the negative effects it creates to the homes, businesses, and neighborhood. The dirt, sand, and slurry created an accumulation on the street requiring the police chief's involvement before any action was taken, forcing the lay-down crew and affiliates to clean up their mess. My clients' vehicles were covered in the slurry, my business was affected due to the daily tracking and transfer of the debris. The vehicles on my sales lot were covered with dirt and sand daily due to the continuance of uncovered dump trucks traveling at unsafe speeds, spilling sand, dirt, and gravel as they passed the business. Multiple complaints were lodged to the lay-down yard crew and town planning department staff overseeing the daily operation of the lay-down yard. However, both the crew and planning department failed to execute a positive resolution. Our complaints were either minimized, or little to no action was enforced. The slow response, lack of action was a clear indication the neighborhood needed to unite, so we started submitting multiple email strings that included all town council members, mayor-elect, and multiple town administration members. After three complaints were made to the Winterville Police Department, the police chief recognized he needed to step in and started issuing citations for the uncovered trucks. Thank you to everyone at the Winterville Police Department, thank you to Mr. Moore, thank you to Mrs. Robertson, and thank you to Mr. Harvey for letting us know that our voices were finally being heard. North American Pipeline Management responded via email stating cleanup of their mess will start Monday, November 8, 2021. They plan to complete a small punch list of items and state they will be completed in a two-week timeline. They also claim they will bring the lay-down parcel along with the damaged streets to the condition they were in before the project began. Also concerning was the response, lack of action when complaints were submitted. Going forward, we would like to know who will be enforcing the prevention of the dirt, unsafe speeds, problems associated with the lay-down yard crew and affiliates. What measures will be taken to enforce their two-week timeline? Who will manage the inspection of the parcel and streets verifying they are back to satisfactory condition? Unfortunately, we are left with more questions than answers, but I am only here for the best interest of the community. Thank you for your time and correction in this matter.
Have you been compensated at all for the cars being cleaned?
No, sir.
Have you been compensated, have your houses been dirty?
No, sir.
Have you asked them about being compensated?
Uh, no, sir.
I think you should do that like I'm going to do. My house is filthy too, it's going to top the rooftop. They cleaned it up yesterday. You know, we should not have that kind of mess in people's houses. They work on the road.
Yes, sir.
I had to clean off my porch a number of times, so I should need to be compensated for cleanup, water bill, and getting my rooftop cleaned. I have an address for Mr. Williams, if you need the address, phone number.
Thank you.
But we both need to be compensated.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Powell Meter, do you mind giving your address for your business so we...
Yes, ma'am. 120 Depot Street.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Parker.
Yes, ma'am.
Will you answer those questions that he had?
Will someone refer them, make sure that we get answers for those questions to him?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, to the group.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And I have a question for you or either Ben, Ms. Parker. When construction is done and they come in to do the construction, do y'all know where the lay-down yards are going to be and all that, or do they consult?
I'm sorry, I'm going to ask Ben to...
Depending on the situation, the project duration, what they're looking to store, occasionally we will allow them to utilize some of our own property if we have it. In most cases, they coordinate with a private property owner themselves, very similar. When DOT did Boyd Street, the contractor contacted a private property owner on Chapman Street, they utilized that lay-down area for the duration of that project. So, it's typically the contractor's responsibility to procure and secure that site.
Yeah, I understand that, but it seemed like, as far as like lay-down yard, even though they're talking with private homeowners or whatever, it seemed like we should be least notified where they may be.
So, certainly in hindsight, the restricting access to Depot Street would have probably been better, just to have them funnel out on Chapman. The type of project being town-wide, well, not from corner to corner, but not specific just to Depot Street, but the majority of the project being at Chapman, Main, and those areas there, that was an area of proximity to the majority of the project. Certainly, experience comes with failure. There are certainly lessons learned in this, they will be applied in future projects.
And that's what I was getting at, not, I'm just getting to the...
Certainly.
This is a lesson learned for all of us, and if we could kind of put some measures in place, you know, just asking, you know, where this lay-down yard is going to be so that we make sure that we don't run into these type of problems again. If we are on top of it, you know, just kind of knowing where things are going to be. I know we can't, you know, everywhere, but at least knowing...
Certainly, and, you know, in the early stages of the project, Ms. Hines and Mr. Cushman were dealing with inundation and flooding issues. However, the past 60 days and the only one inch of rain that I think we've gotten has resulted in dust issues. So, we had mud in the beginning and we have dust storms at the end, so.
All right. Okay. We appreciate it.
We'll definitely be getting responses out for the questions posed, and I agree with Ben, we've learned a laundry list of lessons that we'll be getting together afterward and as a staff and trying to figure out better ways to do things moving forward.
Well, thank you, Ben.
Certainly.
Thank you, Terry.
Yes.
All right. Well, that concludes our public comment section. Next up is our consent agenda.
If you approve.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to approve our consent agenda by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Moore. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Give you a quick update on the cemetery expansion project. These pictures aren't the best you've ever seen. I am not a professional photographer, but hopefully it will give you some sense of what's been done out on the property to date. Thank you, folks.
Could you hold for a second, Terry? And let them clear out. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate y'all. Thank you.
As we've been discussing, we are in the process of, we have a cemetery expansion project underway. It is behind the current cemetery on Reed Branch. We have plotted and staked off the property. So, what I tried to do here is just give you a sense of what the property looks like, and we've been trying to dig in some of the roadways for that second phase, if you will. That, according to staff, and staff's doing that work, that land and some of the dirt we've had to move, he says it's almost like cement, it's so hard. So, it's taken a little bit extra added oomph to get some of the roadways dug in, but Willie Gay is the person who's currently doing that, and he has made good progress and should be finished with some of the roadway work so that we can get on to the other work at hand on the land itself. So, having said that, we're still shooting for some time after the first of the year to have plots available for sale, but we have a second phase to this project, and that is council discussion on cemetery regulations and the pricing and cost for individual plots at the cemetery. I included in your packet information that I provided to you last meeting in October. Don't know that you're ready to discuss that tonight, but just keeping it on your agenda that we all need to make some decisions on that in the near future.
We allow people who do not live in town to buy plots at all, because, you know, it's not a money maker. People are residents, pay for it.
Correct.
So, that means a person outside is not paying their fair share, just a comment.
And what I have learned is that there's a lot of ways you could address that if you wanted to make that available. You can look at just the extraterritorial jurisdiction if you wanted to do that. You don't have to look at anything outside the corporate limits. And if you look beyond that, you could look at some type of additional fee on top of what the individual plots cost.
But that fee is long-term.
That's right.
These people have houses in town limits.
That's right.
Pay for it long-term.
That's right.
The person outside will not pay for it long-term.
You're right, you're right. And the fee I speak of, certainly, the fee for the individual plot nor any additional fee you put on top of it will never pay for the perpetual upkeep that the town has to undertake in order to keep the cemetery in good shape, so.
Just comment, everybody remember that.
Absolutely.
They're not paying for it long-term.
That's right.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Moore.
I just, again, wanted to provide the pictures, give you a quick update. Did not anticipate you all were ready to make decisions tonight, but I'm certainly ready to discuss it when you all are.
I think we need to take some time to look at it and then bring it back.
That's perfect, yeah, that's perfectly fine.
Make a decision. But I have been out there and I've seen the work that's done out there at the cemetery. I went out to visit my wife and I saw the work, actually, I saw Willie Gay out there on the barb kit.
He can drive it all.
Yeah, out there on the barb kit, so. Next up is the parking plan and traffic flow update.
Ben's in the conference room, but I think I can give you the quick update. Again, is we're still not completely finished with the sewer project. Ben, I want to speak for you. We were planning on undertaking most of that work once the sewer project is complete, and certainly, we're not quite there yet, so.
Does it include around the town hall?
Yes, we will be back to you with recommendations and plans for the traffic pattern behind town hall.
I have to make a left turn.
It is.
Deep Street.
And that's going to impact some additional parking, or some current parking, and so we'll definitely be making recommendations, but Ben, go right ahead.
Yeah, that's it. We've got, it's a multi-pronged approach to flow as well as, you know, there's a component of restriping, there's a component of trying to increase number of spaces in the area. The restriping is certainly low-hanging fruit that will occur quickly. Once the sewer contractor gets out of town and all pavement is, or asphalt's put back down, then increasing some spaces, that'll take a little bit longer and probably another contractor to do some of that work in certain areas. And then, the flow, I'm going to leave that up to PD. We'll put the signs up whenever they decide which way you want the cars to go. We can get with the public works guys and then we can put the signs up.
Well, it'll definitely be, it's a multi-pronged approach again, so there will be different phases, and we will definitely be back before council with any recommended changes that we will be requesting. But I do think the first will entail marking, restriping, et cetera.
Right, and that'll be, you know, certainly, there's been some markings that have been either eliminated or faded, and we'll touch those up in, not just on the parking spaces, but likely some crosswalks and things of that nature as well.
Thank you, Ben.
I'll just hang out here.
Probably.
Next up is three-way stop sign ordinance for East Main Street and Brook Lane. I asked this to be up there because I went down East Main and Brook, and it's a straight shot through there. Three-way stop sign would be, you know, just great for that area, slow some traffic down over there, because it's kind of tough over there. I was sitting there and I was just watching, it's like a speedway. So, at least if we had a stop sign there, at least slowing them down to get up to the next stop sign.
Also, Church Street's that long stretch.
Well, I got something about that, too.
It's a long stretch.
We have an ordinance amendment in front of you this evening. Staff's ready to move forward upon council's approval.
I make a motion that we accept the ordinance.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Hines, second by Councilman Moore. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you.
I've got something to say about that.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, you know, I'm talking to a lot of citizens in our community, and it bothers me when I see things happen like this. It took a long time for us to get stop signs down on Tyson Street, and we just did this one just like that. It's a difference. We need to make sure that we handle everybody at the same. It bothers me when I see things happen like this. Let's treat all parts of Winterville the same.
I don't know that we did. I don't remember any, at any time we did not do this question. I could be wrong.
It took a while to get those stop signs. Those of us on the board should remember. I don't ask you to go back and pull the records, but we didn't do it in one meeting.
I think I brought this up last, I brought this up last time and requested that they look at this, and then we looked at it, I think. Chief, did you go over and look at this area?
And that could be, you know, the reason I'm saying this, because there had to be a traffic study down on Tyson Street, there had to be, there were lots of things done before the stop signs were put there.
If I could say, Councilwoman Robertson...
I just, you know, it's fine, I just want us to recognize when we're doing things a little differently, because it bothers me, and I've been noticing, I've been paying more attention to things, and...
I will say the stop signs at Tyson have been there a while, and they were some of the...
Yes, but I'm talking about the time it took from the request to the actual placement of the stop signs. It wasn't quick like this, you know.
I recletted, man, quick. That's my opinion, that's my recollection.
That's your opinion?
Yeah.
And this is mine.
Thank you, thank you all both. New Business, Blueberry Subdivision Platte?
All right. So, we've got a preliminary platt's middle for Blueberry Subdivision. So, this is located at the intersection of Church Street Extension and Park Road, parcel number 70857. So, this preliminary platte will be 32 acres.
So this preliminary platte will be 32 acres, change with 69 proposed lots. Current zoning is R8 conditional district. Just some photos of the site. So that's standing on Church Street looking south. This is Park Road. You guys will be familiar with Park Road. It's the only DOT maintained dirt road in town. So this is the western property looking, western property line looking south along the railroad. You can see the outline in blue, Park Road to the north, Church Street. So this is all Brookstone over here, and then O-11, and then you got Reedy Branch over there. So just some items of note. So this is a tributary coming off Swift Creek. It is a buffered stream. You got a 50-foot buffer along that, that stream there. There's the railroad track denoted in the orange or yellow, and then the dirt road. So all these things played a factor into the, you know, review of this subdivision proposal. Specifically, you know, when we're looking at subdivisions, we want to look at interconnectivity. This one presents challenges with, with all three sides being, some type of impediment being that whether the railroad, the buffered stream, and then the dirt road. But anytime we've got an environmentally sensitive area, we try to stay away from that and, you know, and keep in line with Division of Water Resources. You know, if there are, if there appear to be practical alternatives, they request that we don't require that stub out across it. So we've noted that in their request and didn't require stub out to the south where we usually would. We usually would put some, obviously, we can't go across the railroad, and, but usually we would try to get to this property here, but being it's an environmentally sensitive area, stay away from that. But there's your subdivision layout on it, so you got access on Church Street Extension. So we did provide, say, we, they did provide access to Park Road. We did come to a compromise with them. At this point, we were stubbing out to it, so we're kind of treating this like our stub out. So DOT, if we, if we made them stub, or if we made them connect to it, DOT was going to require the developer to go ahead and construct that road to DOT standards. Obviously, it's a DOT road. They maintain it, so we felt like from a town's perspective, DOT should be the one to pave it and not put that burden on the developer. So our compromise is to take it there, give access to our emergency management, so that they will have a 26-foot emergency management lane there. And emergency management will have, will have access there in case of, you know, impeded there. So at the time the DOT comes and paves this to DOT standards, they'll have access here.
I've talked to Representative Humphrey, and he will be moving out of Pitt County to a new district. Hopefully, he'll keep his promise in the budget this year that that be paved. He said he would do that.
As far as projects go on DOTs, you know, I think this will probably be one of the most doable ones. The roadbed's already there. It won't take a whole lot, so, you know, we've talked to our DOT representatives about it, too. So hopefully, when him coming down the chain, them going up the chain, they'll get some movement going on.
I often look at railroad crossing.
Right.
So, so that I'm clear, you're saying that DOT said they might pave this road?
I haven't even gotten that far with them, so they're not even.
So we're going to develop this neighborhood with a dirt road running beside it?
The only option at this point we've got, so, like I said, as far as the planning side goes, you know, we're looking at it as more of a stub road to, to, to a future access point. So it would, it'd be akin to having a single access to Villa Grand or Eli's Ridge. At this point, all those have got the same, same exact thing we've got, that they're, and eventually they'll stub out to, to develop property and give that access at a future point.
So basically, this is just like on the map, be a stub out.
Exactly.
Like a conventional stub out will be.
And the road will go straight to the, to the property line. Once you start accessing, once they go and ask DOT for a driveway permit to access their property, that's when DOT is going to put the requirements on them to, to take that road and upgrade it to certain, to, to current DOT standards.
We couldn't put requirements, contingents on, on that?
Traditionally, this was not done a conditional approval.
Okay. But you know what I'm saying, all right?
As far as saying upon approval that they, they would, yeah, I mean, at this point, I'm not prepared to, to.
Answer the question.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Okay.
This change is going right into Swift Creek, just like those other subdivisions across the road.
So, yeah, they'll have a stormwater pond located in this area, and it will, it will outlet to that tributary, and then eventually work its way to Swift Creek and go downstream. Yes, ma'am.
Court Aiden.
I'm sorry?
Court Aiden.
Yep.
Again, I make a motion approved.
All right, and I got some more stuff if you guys want to see it, but, but, yeah, I've pretty much gotten through it. Well, that's, yeah, that's what I got, so I was just going to say that.
Ryan, I want, excuse me, I want to be clear. Right now, there'll be one ingress and egress into the development.
Technically, there'll be two with emergency, but yes, as far.
Realistically.
Realistically, there'll be one ingress, egress, and that'll be along Church Street, yes. So I, just some site history, we, this property got rezoned in December of 2020 to R8 conditional district. That condition on it being that it would be a minimum block size of 10,000 square foot. So TRC did review this preliminary platte on October 5th, and P and Z Planning and Zoning Board did unanimously recommend approval on October 18th. But with that said, I think you've, you've got a motion on the floor.
Got it. A motion, now have a second. Again, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Moore. Do we have a second? Okay, Mr. Moore, your motion has failed due to a lack of a second.
I understand.
I do have a question. I got a concern about the dirt road.
Sure.
Yes. And emergency equipment for, for that area. You having a problem about entering and exits and exiting that area, Chief?
Chief.
Come to the mic, sir.
The requirements that we had is that the road be wide enough, which is 26 feet, and on this plan, it's actually 28 feet.
Okay.
And if they put a gate on that road, it's got to have a Knox lock on it so that the town can access it in event of an emergency.
Got to have a dot lock, not lock.
Knox lock.
Oh, oh, yes, got it. So they can be able to.
Yep, so they've met our requirements for that.
Okay. Yeah, because we have another area like that also. Is that correct?
Blackstone.
Blackstone, I mean.
We've actually got quite a few of them, but some of them are on private property.
Have we had any problem with the situation like that? We haven't had emergency either, though, have we? To a point that, that you definitely need another exit out instead of just the main entrance.
I mean, we, we drive on some of these on a semi-routine basis. We haven't had a motor vehicle crash or something that blocked the neighborhood in.
Or a tree fell over.
And that's what we worry about.
Yeah. That is one of my concerns, and, you know, if we can work that out, I mean, that's very important.
Yes, sir.
Last month, we discussed about having a 7-0 vote. You know, this was a 7-0 vote for the planning board. What is the option if you don't approve? If we do not approve this part, what is the option?
So the next step, they would go back to the drawing board. It's not like a rezoning, so it wouldn't go, it's not like they couldn't come back and submit, so basically, you guys got discretion to approve.
Well, I think most, I think most of our concern, I'm just speaking for myself, but I think the concern is, is the dirt road, that DOT is going to, or they can get a commitment from the DOT about the dirt road, you know, with, with being just one egress in, you know.
Now, one thing that I, I will make you aware of is right now, the fire code references 30 houses.
Mm-hmm.
That requirement will be changing after the first of the year, and that will become 100 houses.
Oh.
So at that point, the fire code, you know, that's going to change.
If you go further with that, what will be 100 houses?
So right now, if you've got more than 30 houses in a, in a neighborhood, you've got to have more than one means of ingress and egress. Only way around that is if you sprinkle all the houses. That's going to be changing. That number's going to become 100 sometime after January.
I assume developments are getting around that by the phased approach?
We've always had council support for the multiple means of ingress and egress. The neighborhoods on Reedy Branch Road were the, last time this conversation came up.
Copper Creek.
Copper Creek, Holly Grove. But we, from a code official standpoint, we're losing that, that fight, if you will. But we're losing ground on that. So it'll, either through planning, zoning, whatever, we're kind of losing the teeth on our end.
Okay. All right. So, what's, Brian?
I was just going to say, obviously, we know the dirt road maintained by DOT is a unicorn. That thing, this doesn't exist anywhere, and it's a problem that I've never addressed in my career. I doubt, I doubt I will again. So, you know, working with the developer on this and making sure we got a, a game plan going forward was, was the intent. So we knew we needed interconnection, but to put the burden on them to, to, to upgrade that road to DOT standards would probably put them out of the ballpark of actually developing it. So it was a, it was a fine line to walk, but I, and I was just going to also mention that, obviously, Lynn Woodstroud's in the audience, and Mr. Evans is in the audience, if you guys have any questions for them. But, so that was the, the background on, you know, how we approached it. We knew it from the time, even when the rezoning came through, that that was going to be an issue. We reached out to DOT. DOT's immediate response was the town can have it. Well, obviously, we've got more than enough to deal with other than a dirt road that needs to be improved, so.
Exactly.
I don't think that's an option that council would probably entertain very readily. So this was, like I said, the balance and act that we, we, we came through and with our technical review committee, with everybody involved, everybody was on board with the way it was designed and the way, the way it was presented. So we did work through this and get to the point where we're at right now, so.
Brian, do you.
Mr., I'm sorry. I was going to ask, you said Mr. Edwards.
So you got the project engineer Lynn Woodstroud and Mr. Evans, the developers.
Okay, Mr. Stroud, can you step up, please? Can you enlighten us on any conversation you may, or any one of y'all may have had with DOT or?
Yes, we did contact DOT regarding this, provided them a copy of the platte. We asked about the possibility of DOT going ahead and paving the road. We didn't get any positive response. This, what you see on the platte that's in front of you is what they have agreed to. It does provide us the opportunity to have that second entrance at such time as that road is paved by DOT. So I feel like we've done everything within our power to try to facilitate that second ingress, egress point. We certainly understand the need for it, and we're hoping that DOT will step forward and pave the road so that before too much more time passes, we will have that second ingress, egress.
But you understand where we're coming from as a board, correct?
Yes, sir.
Any idea what, what that would cost? What I would imagine? Any, any projection on?
I haven't done an estimate on, you know, had to throw out a ballpark, just guessing, I'd say $100,000 or something like that.
Probably more. Used to be a truck would park along that, that road a lot.
Long truck.
Transfer truck. That's why I hit that truck, that road. Reported a number of times, that truck sat there.
What projects are on, we have is on our priority list for transportation projects, Brian? I know, you know, Tar Road, we know about that.
Yeah, so in town, I'm not sure if we have any on the tip up there, but I know of. We've got future projects that are kind of earmarked and drawn that have been taken off, the Fire Tower Road Extension, been thrown around for about a decade now. But other than that, no, no in-town projects we have.
So we did feel like that by providing the, stubbing out the pavement to the right-of-way of Park Road, making that available for emergency vehicles would, it's not the ideal situation by any stretch of the imagination, but we felt like that would, would, would be satisfactory as an interim solution until such time it was paved, so that emergency vehicles would have access in the case of any emergency in the subdivision.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you think there's a chance that we could get this on that list?
Potentially, but I don't think they're going to do any more prioritization until, I think it's not until next year.
I mean, you know, we're all hearing about so much infrastructure money.
Sure.
You know, being.
Yeah, it's absolutely something we, I mean, there's a TAC meeting actually this Wednesday, so the NPA TAC, their Technical Advisory Committee's meeting this Wednesday.
On the town.
2:00.
2:00.
2:00 on Wednesday.
Is the mayor on me there?
And you may, and Councilman Moore is the alternate voting member for town, so you may be called in to, to fill in for Mayor Jackson if he's not available to go in.
I'm going to bring up intersection two at Vernon White again. I hope I can get the vote from two of other municipalities, get their vote with us, make that a priority road.
But I would also mention, Mr. Stroud alluded to it, that DOT is part of our technical review committee, so they, they have seen this plan. They did put their stamp of approval on what we, what was proposed, so.
Well, we still need to do something on this, correct, King?
You had a, had a motion that failed for a second. I typically like to have a, a, a motion that brings some finality to it, so then you would have a motion to deny.
Right.
If that's where the board is going.
Well, I make a motion that we deny this project at this time. Okay? Okay, since I don't have a second to this, this failed for lack of a second. Okay, people? What is your persuasion?
What do you need to vote for, King? I mean, we, we turned it down. I mean, there needs to be some going back to the drawing board with the DOT to determine what we can do about getting a road in there.
I, I think that.
And if there's some share costs that go along with that, I mean, that could be looked at between the developer and the, and the state.
Sure. I definitely would agree, there needs to be a little more focus or a little more work done on, on, on the, the project. The vote to deny, as I understand it, will not hinder them from coming back.
Correct, what he said.
So, so there's, sometimes there's a concern about a vote to deny will prevent somebody from coming back within a short period of time. But we, we, just simply because we didn't have a, a motion to bring some finality to the matter at hand, we had a motion that failed for a second. Usually, we look to then have a motion to go ahead and bring some type of decision.
I mean, I don't think we did this on the development that we, that we turned down on Reedy Branch Road and Davenport Farm Road. I just think that we were clear that the board wanted some action taken on the stoplight, the widening of the road, and right in and outs, coming in and out of those neighborhoods.
I thought we took a vote on those.
We denied it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'll second his motion, if it's not too late. I'll give him a second, so we can vote on it and.
Well, got to reinstate my motion.
Okay.
Okay. My motion is that we deny this project at this time.
I'll second.
Can you include why we're doing that?
Okay. With, being, how can I word it to make sure right, that, help me out.
Due to reservations on the access roads and.
Paved, paved Park Road.
Okay.
Unpaved, the, Park Road not being a paved road.
Okay. Due to Park Road not being a paved road and bringing back.
Access road, access to.
Well, we wanted to bring back some. Well, we wanted to bring back some type of.
Solution.
Solution, right, some type of solution. All right, so that, that would be my motion, and you can still second that.
Five, seven.
Okay.
So we can move on.
All right.
All right, under discussion, last month, we denied a request at the Seveno, Seveno other direction. Just wanted to note that in the record, and I'm going to pose it for that purpose this time because last time was such a discussion on that topic.
Correct. So we have a motion made by Ricky Hines, second by Councilwoman Robinson?
May I just restate, I mean, may I just make sure I understand the motion? So Mayor Precium, you made a motion to deny the request based on council's concerns about the unpaved road, Park Road. And was there more to that to ask that the developer look at other solutions? Or that's where I'm, I didn't follow the rest of that?
The other solution is the cost.
I'd like to, to enter a reservation as far as access. You know, I think any housing development should have at least.
Well, that's in, that's in, that's in here. I mean, you got the stub, they have a stubout in here, but they stubbing out to an unpaid road.
But the idea of stubout is for emergency vehicles. That's like over there in Black, Blackstone, that's what I'm here. Am I correct? That one.
Blackstone and this one's, this apples and oranges, I think. So you're talking about a, Blackstone was a little bit, it's a different animal because they had it preliminary platted with a cul-de-sac. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, somebody bought section two of it, and part of that redevelopment of that was to put an access in with Kingdom Hall so they could have the access there all, all the time. I don't think that was the original intent. This one, I think the, the big difference is here is you've got a DOT maintained road that's going to provide access at some point in the future. We're treating this like a stubout to that. So it takes the, the interconnectivity part of the subdivision ordinance and meets that criteria, so.
I do have, if I may, there's a whole other section of it. I have heard council say you want more than one.
Right, one entrance.
We've never really discussed whether stubouts is what you intended by that. Maybe not with this particular project, but at some point, I think staff's going to need some clarification to help.
Well, for me, for me, I always look at, and this is just me, when I sit on Pitt County Planning Board, a stubout basically is going to turn into where it goes into either another subdivision or connect to a, a road eventually.
I agree.
That's what we, that's what I learned over there.
You know, I, I think when you're looking at interconnectivity and stubouts to adjacent property, you're looking at the long game. You're not looking at something that's going to be immediate. So I'll, I'll point back to, you know, other subdivisions in town that have, have stubout like Villa Grande or Villa Grand, where you, you go, there's one, one entrance, one exit right now. But if you, if you meander back into the subdivision, it does stubout. So eventually, that thing is going to swing back out to Red Ford Road and eventually go out to Frog Level Road. But right now, there's only one entrance, one exit of that subdivision. The Nally was the same way. When they first did it, there was one entrance, one exit. But as it develops in the phase, you get your second entrance, you get your second, or you get your interconnectivity to adjacent property. So that's, that was the angle we were going at with this one. You know, essentially, you're going to have one emergency access, you're going to have two. So and then upon, you know, the paving of Park Road, you will have a full-fledged entrance, egress, ingress, so.
The one right off of Vernon White Road, that's Blackstone, you said, Black?
Yes.
Yes. I was there a couple of weeks ago, talked to some of the residents or the citizen that lives in there. And they do have a concern. They said they have been very fortunate that they haven't had a situation where it's that they have a need to be able to get out because of, they only have one entrance in and one entrance out. And they definitely need to have something addressed. And the understanding I got from them, it was some sort of promissory note. Somebody had promised them something that, that road, the street beyond the condo site was going to extend right on out to Tar Road.
Well, I think at one point where the, the Kingdom Hall Church sits was originally part of that subdivision.
That is right.
Yeah.
And they sold it, so when they did that, that's when they compromised on the emergency access. I think that, that's been done for 15 years now. I don't know how long it, it's been, it's been a long time, it's been.
It was less than that, we, we actually approved it.
Yes.
I was, I was talking about the initial Blackstone subdivision. Preliminary plat was in, I don't know, I had to.
We'll prove that road, that move, emergency road.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
So that is one of the reasons why I'm concerned about these stubouts. And I understand I got, I think the emergency department, they're the only one that has access or. Department. Be able to unlock and for them to go through that. They don't have to have a gate. Do we have gates to those developments?
You're doing Blackstone, right? Blackstone does not?
No, I know Blackstone, I looked that up.
Okay, all right.
Something that we, we definitely need to look at.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Okay, let's ring any, all right.
Well, I second it, so we can move on.
We can move on, okay, all right. All in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, raise your hand. Okay, motion carry. Thank you. All right, next up, Wooton Company.
This is, the item before you is the general consulting contract with Wooton Company for just general engineering, review of plans, any small projects that come up. We've had this contract with Wooton for quite a few years. This is just an extension of that contract for an additional.
Motion to approve.
Gotcha, it's for 25,000, not to exceed without prior approval. Just want to throw that in there.
Got a motion on the floor?
Was there a second?
Ain't no second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second to approve the contract. Any discussion?
Yes, I think this right here was brought up a couple of years ago that had we really reach out to other ones to negotiate if they was interested in doing the same type. Do we have anybody else besides the Wooton Company that we can reach out to?
Well, we have other engineering companies that do different facets of work for us. This is, I forget when we went out last for, request for proposals on general consulting. I'm looking at being, I don't know that you remember either.
No, it's been a while.
It may, four or five years, maybe, I don't remember specifically. Probably within the next year or so, it would be good to go out for that again.
Yes.
But since we have so many ongoing projects currently with the Wooton Company, it would make sense to continue our consulting, engineering relationship with them.
Well, I, no doubt, they have been done, they have done an excellent job for us. And, but still, you know, when you get to a point, we, we, we need to go be young in a circle and reach out and see if there is anything that might be a little bit better for us.
And we do that routinely.
We do that routinely. And, but I haven't heard anything on this.
Well, like I said, it could have been four or five, it could have been longer than that. It's probably getting about time to do that. But certainly, we would ask that council approve this. It's four year.
But one year.
Yes.
That's correct. It's, it's one year.
Got a motion and a, and a second on the floor?
I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry. All right, got a, got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Renew application, design, and certification retirement community.
Okay, it is time for the town of Winterville to renew its application for designation as a certified retirement community with the state. As you all were, I don't remember how many years it's been now. The town applied for and received the designation as a certified retirement community. And we feel like that designation has really done us well in terms of being able to go out there and market Winterville to retirees and moving here. So the initial fee with the state that we paid for that designation was $10,000. It has increased slightly for a period of five years. It will be $3,000 a year for a total application fee of $15,000. I would ask, this was not included in the budget because the town did not, was not made aware that our application would be due in, I think it's January of 2022. So we've been recently made aware of that and would ask that council approve us proceeding with this application for designation, continued designation, and that you approve the fee of 15,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Tony Moore. Any discussions? Okay, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Okay, other agenda items, write a letter to the postal service. Federal elected official requesting another building for Winterville Post Office. Councilman Moore, you're on deck.
I've been approached by employees of the post office again to, for us to write Senator Burr and Tillis and Congressman Butterfield, asking for help in enlarging a building for the post office.
I've heard.
Our community is, our, our community has grown, we deserve a larger post office. More parking and safety of the employees is important, and the service is important. I'm fighting the post office now for a hundred dollar fine. Get to court in February.
Okay, good luck.
I've heard that request from employees up there and citizens also about the space. And of course, the residents, the housing development has grown up around it. Of course, they are, you know, not pleased with the noise and things that we're hearing about. So if you're making a motion, I'll second.
I make a motion that we write letters to our three federal elected officials about enlarging a, a, a larger facility, a large parking area.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Moore, a second by Ms. Councilwoman Robinson. Any discussion? Okay, motion on the table, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carry. All right, next up, the crosswalk on Cooper Street and Church Street. Of course, during this past election cycle, I was doing walking detail with my son from AG Cox back over here, and I noticed that down on Cooper and Church, it's kind of hard to cross there. Right nearby, right nearby your house. But I also noticed that it used to be a crosswalk there, but it's faded out. And so Chief, Ben, somebody stepped forth.
Ben's man tonight.
But.
I'll get the chief some paint.
Okay, get the chief some paint. But also too, I also noticed, and I don't know what we need to do, but right there at that corner, that lady has a circle driveway there. But I notice in the afternoons, people park there, right in front of her house. And if you trying to get out of there and kids trying to cross, they got to people around a vehicle, you know, because it's sitting right there. If they weren't parked there, you know, it'd be a whole lot safer. You know, where they could see, you know, without having to step around a vehicle, you know?
I think that'd be a coordinated effort between Chief Will Hite, Will Hite, myself, and DOT since that's an intersection of DOT roads.
And we could get that looking into.
See what the site triangles are.
Definitely need that crosswalk there because I noticed some kids, not just us, but other kids was crossing there also. And then while we're here, if you go down to Blunt Street, I talked to the resource officer there, and he's directing traffic out there now. And he was asking me there at AG Cox if we could paint the.
The whole quadrant?
The whole quadrant as far as walkways, so we can keep the kids in the walkway. And he's right because they.
Well, I want to piggyback on that. We've talked about crosswalks on Ainge Street before. And of course, I drop my two kids off in the mornings at AG Cox. But we have a, I mean, there's no telling how many kids walk from Cooper's Point, both, both sides. I mean, there is a large number of kids. One, people are going too fast up and down Ainge Street. I see it every morning. But number two, we've got to do something about some crosswalks for those children. And there's a section between Primrose and Barrel that we really could use a sidewalk there on that side of the road. Because these kids are walking all in the grass, over by the ditch, next to the ball fields. There's got to be something we can do down there to make that a little more walkable for all of our kids.
So we can.
And make it safer.
We'll coordinate with DOT on the paint. We've put in years ago for sidewalk on an improvement project through the NPO. That's when we included Ainge for that connection to the school. We put in for Mill to connect to Boyd and beyond. So we've got a couple of pedestrian projects in the hopper being prioritized. Hopefully, that'll bubble up to the surface.
I would suggest even if, and, and I know some of these things take a while, but I know the little sign that we put out at the crosswalk of Main Street, that has slowed some traffic down through there.
It has, I did notice this morning. I don't know, I don't know if some.
There's still people that don't pay it any mind, but it has slowed some people down.
I don't know if any.
I'm just wondering, can we put one there between Ainge and Blunt? I guess that's Blunt Street, yeah. If we could put one up there, when the resource officer puts out the, when he blocks that road, could he set one of those in the center of the road? At least for the morning and the afternoon. Because there are a boatload of kids walking through there, and I, I have some concerns there. And I probably just didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I'm sorry.
I probably didn't notice it as much before they changed the traffic pattern because traffic pattern kind of messed up my drop-off. So now I can't go down Blunt and drop them off, so I have to drop them off at the corner where I'm probably not supposed to, but I do.
It's better for them, it's better for them to have to walk a little bit.
So I've, I've noticed every morning now how many kids we have there.
Sure.
That are crossing that road and, and trying to walk up by the baseball field.
I, I too am dropping one off there, and I, I noticed the, the packs of adolescents making their way.
And then being also too, Officer Mador, what's his name?
Dobro.
Dover, Dover. Officer Dover also mentioned if we could also look at a sign just displaying one-way, you know, the time, he was saying.
Okay, so I'll have to get with.
Get with him, yeah.
Chief Will Hite, Dobro, Officer Dobro on their patterns and, and what.
A sign just saying, you know, from such and such, it's, you know, it's one-way.
All right.
Let me, let me add on to that a little more. I know, I know we're throwing a lot of stuff on you, but Division, it's not Division when it crosses over. What does it cross over to?
Division?
Division right there at the corner.
It goes from Ainge to Church?
Division crosses, crosses over Ainge and goes into Cooper's Point. There's a lot of kids.
Oh, sure, sure, that's right, that's right.
There's a lot of kids that cross right there to get to the sidewalk. There's no crosswalk there. And that's a, that's another crazy busy area. Of course, they're trying to get to the crosswa, I mean, to the sidewalk, but then when they get down to Savania Street, there's no sidewalk from there back across.
Those projects there were to infill some gaps on the sidewalks and include crosswalks in those areas. Again, DOT owns and operates Ainge, but we can speak with and coordinate with them on trying to get some improvements there for safety.
Well, I mean, that, I mean, that, as far as I'm concerned, the town should, should pay for those sidewalks and get them in. You know how I feel about the DOT, we don't get anything out of them. But, you know, that's a two-block section, three blocks at the most from the corner of the. of Division, which I don't know what that road is across the street.
So, we had.
But from there down to Primrose.
Right. We, we had to look, and I'd have to go back and look at some of those sections because part of the application in the project included curb and gutter. If you don't have that vertical separation between the traffic and the pedestrian, then you have to have a, you either have a ditch, which is going to operate as your separation or curb and gutter. So, you just have to look at those sections and see what facilities.
Well, this board failed the town when they did not make, and I wasn't on this board and I don't think most people were not on this board, but there should have been curb and gutter on Ainge Street. That's a busy road. It's in the middle of town. How in the world the wonderful town board didn't put in curb and gutter on that street? I'll never understand.
That section of Cooper's Point.
Did our police department get with the resource officer in A.G. Cox to see about traffic patterns and stuff like that before school started? I remember, um.
She did.
I did bring that up.
They reconfigured it after a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just, I just wanted to know.
No, by the same, you haven't been.
Oh, it has been.
No, I do, I'm gonna tell you, I put my granddaughter on the bus at a bus stop because I don't want to add to the problem up there. I realize it's a problem up there. Someday she's late to school.
I think it works good.
I'd have to say it's much improved.
That's why, that's why I do that because, because of that.
It's much improved. There's, there's no, no stockpiling of cars at two, at 3:30 in the afternoon out on Mill Street any longer. So, Officer Dobro and the principal over there came up with a good plan.
Yeah. They have, they've, it's, it's, it's worked, it's working. It's a lot better. He's, he's happy. I've been talking with him. But he's happy. The principal and his staff have been out there and when Officer Dobro can't get out there, they're out there.
I don't have any reservations about it. I'm quite sure that you all are seeing it and you're seeing it from the standpoint of what can we do to make it better?
Right.
So, but I do, I try to, I stay out of school traffic.
But we did talk about this a while back, a year, two, three ago. I think we maybe even had Safe Communities involved and I don't know what happened, but it, nothing happened.
You call this probably a crosswalk Ricky.
Cross. We'll tackle it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ben. All right. Okie dokie.
Next item.
All right. Next item. Feature agenda workshop. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I asked anti-bowers about how much money we had left over from unfilled positions and we have about $250,000. I got with town manager and I said, what can we do special for our staff? My recommendation is that we do a 3% hourly, hourly.
One-time bonus.
One-time only.
For hourly employees.
And 1.5% for exempt employees. It costs us $140,000 and Christmas this year. It will have $110,000 left over for your sidewalks. A motion.
Second. Got a motion on the table for 3% one-time bonus and a 1 point.
For hourly employees.
For hourly employee and 1.5% for exempt employees.
Question already.
Third party is the remaining money goes towards sidewalks along Ainge Street.
And that's, that's what I wanted to talk about. I would like to see that remaining money put in a fund to purchase land for our multipurpose building. It's not a, it funded, it's not funded in our budget and I think that we need, we'll need to move forward on purchasing that land so we can start the process. I would like to see that, the money left. And I, you know, I think it's a great idea, Mr. Moore, to give that money to the employees because the spaces are not filled, the jobs are not filled, but the work is getting done. And so, it's getting done by those employees that are still, you know, that are filling in for that person. That's my only reservation on the use of those funds.
Well, if you look at our fund balance, we got a lot of money left over we can use the land, a lot, and the building already in the budget. If you look at the budget, we have a surplus, a major surplus.
Every time I see something about that, that's, well, that's, that's my suggestion.
I just want to be very cautious. I don't know that we have enough fund balance to pay outright for a building and land.
No, no.
Land, baby.
I'm just saying land.
Okay.
I'm not saying building and land.
Okay.
Just land.
Now, before we, let me restate this motion again because we've got two parts to this.
Three parts.
Three parts to it.
3% hourly.
3%, 1.5%. Then you said sidewalk.
Sidewalks.
Are you talking about sidewalks specifically for A.G. Cox and the stuff we have over there?
And then you, okay, so that's, that's your motion, okay? And I got a second. You made a motion, you seconded a motion, correct?
Correct.
All right.
And I just got one question then.
Discussion.
Um, how much money do we have in the power bill?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I'll be glad to get it and get it back to you.
Because we can use that money towards the sidewalk. And then like the funds that we are speaking of that is going to be left over if we give our employees increase. Another, because we already gave one increase this year, right?
This would be a one, this is a one-time bonus.
This is like, this is like a Christmas bonus.
Correct.
Okay. I want to make sure I understand.
That's correct.
But they're hard, dedicated?
Oh, all right. Look, yes, I mean, I live in this town too, Mr. Moore. Yes, indeed. You don't have to sell that on many because I, yes, I totally agree with you 100%. But I want to make sure that, like Ms. Robinson was speaking of, that multi-purpose building. We've been talking about that for many years and I think that we, we need to start, at least start moving forward towards that. And that right now would be a great, a great opportunity to make that happen.
All right. We have, I'm sorry.
So, mine will be, the left, what be left, go towards the multi-purpose building and then look at getting the funds for the sidewalk.
My only problem with the multi-purpose building and that's all fine and great, but that's, that's a ways down the road. Those kids are walking down that street every morning, every single morning.
One child dies between now and the time we did the budget.
Well, I said we can get the money out of the power bill. We've got the money. I'm quite sure.
Okay, okay, okay. Let's, let's rein it in, people.
Oh, okay. Yes, sir.
Let's rein it in. We have a motion on the floor and let's vote accordingly, okay? All in favor of the motion?
What is the motion, sir?
The motion is to give a 3% to hourly.
Yes, hourly. One-time, 3%.
One-time, 3% to hourly. And a 1.5%.
One-time, 1.5% to exempt.
To exempt. And the other money is to be used for sidewalks on Ainge Street. Ainge Street. That was his motion. Second by Mr. Smith, okay? All right. That's the motion. Now, we're going to vote on the motion, okay?
We have a question. Could you do it separately? Just do the increase for the.
Well, let's, let's try this one, then we go back to my.
Just do the increase for the employees first and the staff.
Let's finish, let's settle on this, we come back with that next.
Got this motion on the floor, all right? All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose, raise your hand.
Raise your hand.
Huh? I voted with the ayes. I'm sorry. I voted with the ayes. All right. So, it's 3-2. Motion carry 3-2. I'm sorry. 3-2.
Now, we can come back. Let's look at the power bill money, use, use it on the, whatever, in the area.
But power bill money can't be used.
Can't be used for that.
Other sidewalks, though.
Yes, it can be used for other sidewalks. You're right. And they have, we've been suggested that we put sidewalks on Mill Street a long time and they're still not there. There are pedestrians walking up and down there. Doesn't matter who it is or what it is, they're always taking their life at risk to walk on the road.
Well, Ms. Robinson, you want to make a motion that we put sidewalks on Mill Street?
Well, I'm quite sure that power bill money is already designated, aren't they?
I'm, I'm just asking.
We've been talking to DOT about sidewalks on Mill Street, Ben. I don't know if you have an update on that and then I want to circle back around.
That'd be many years.
Well, that's right. I mean, with a handful of years ago, we put in an applicant, or we put that project in as a, a project in the hopper with the NPO as a prioritization. It made it to, it didn't make it to the 1 to 5. It made it to the 7 to 10. So, there was no money earmarked for it. As Mr. Jones alluded, there's a TAC meeting on Wednesday. We can certainly have more conversations at where they're at on this cycle as well as the upcoming prioritization cycle and see if there's any, you know, with how DOT kind of hit the brakes on all projects, they're kind of letting off the brakes. There may be some opportunity for some of these smaller scale pedestrian safety type projects to come back to light and maybe occur a little more sooner than later.
I'll bring it up Wednesday if I'm the person, Doug's not gonna be there either.
Is that a public meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's Wednesday where?
It is Wednesday. It's Greenville City Hall.
What time?
Either 1:30 or 2:00.
I've been to two meetings so far, what, three, one meeting. Only go, the mayor's not there.
It is open to the public, but it is virtual.
Oh, it's virtual? Last meeting. I hope you think, say something.
Ms., Ms.
It's 1:30.
I, I was just, I have some more information that I might share with you regarding recreation land at a.
Close session.
Close session.
Okay, close session later.
We can do it in a closed session, okay? All right. All right. Let's move on further. Where are we at? Lost future, future agenda items and future work session.
I do have down, just for informational purposes, our stormwater.
Right.
Workshop.
And now here's something else I was gonna bring up. Yeah, oh, let me, let me do something. It'll come to me.
Can you bring in any announcements?
Yeah. Okay. Announcements. Don?
Yes, sir. Uh, the announcements this Thursday, town offices will be closed for Veterans Day. And also Thursday at 2:00 P.M., the Veterans Day ceremony will be at Flagpole, out in front of the police station. And I'm gonna let, you want to do that now?
The topic, major topic is suicide. The speaker from East County University is gonna speak about suicide in military. It's a big problem. Hope you all attend. Also, any member who's a military person can speak out, say recognition of like Air Force, anybody can speak about their time in Air Force, Army, Coast Guard, so everyone who's a veteran has a chance to speak that day. And if you want to talk about somebody, not you, but somebody else you can speak to, if you'll have time to, everybody gets their chance to speak that day. And so, I hope you come out and how beautiful weather looks like. Not gonna rain like, you know, two years ago, we did it inside in the fire department. John Moore did it for us and had a good turnout and we got the same people singing. It's not me, of course. Lou, he does it for us free every year. This is our 20th year doing it. Them over, it handed over to somebody else.
Thank you, Councilman Moore. Appreciate that. Uh, on, next Monday is Planning and Zoning Board. There's no, nothing needing to come to that board, so it has been canceled. Tuesday would be Board of Adjustment meeting and there's nothing to be held at that meeting, so it has been canceled. Tuesday, November 23rd at 6:30 P.M., Recreation Advisory Board will meet at the Operations Center. Then on Thursday, November 25th and Friday, November 26th, town offices will be closed for the Thanksgiving holidays. And on Saturday, December 4th is the Christmas Activity Day. The market will run from 1:00 to 7:00 that day. The parade will be at 2:00 P.M. and the tree lighting will be at 6:00 P.M. that evening. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. I remember what I was gonna ask. Ms. Parker assured me that they're working on it and that was board appointments. And they're gathering all the information so it makes sure that we can tighten up our boards.
Trying to recruit members.
Right. Get our boards so that they be full, okay? I'm sorry. Okay.
I just get tasked with that a lot of times. So, if anyone knows of someone, please send them my way. I will make sure they get an application and they can turn that around and we'll have the information that we need to make those appointments. And we, we do need volunteers from our community. So, please, people that you know, have them contact me.
Do you have any of them?
There are a few, but I don't think we even have enough. And typically where we run into problems are on, I think it's planning and zoning in the ETJ, some things like that. So, if you know people that live in our ETJ, make sure you send them our way. I do remember though, most of the boards except, have to either be in the ETJ or municipal limits. So, that's the one thing. And I, and I go through and check them when they come in, but I sure don't want somebody to, to apply and then they not be eligible.
Mr. Jones there, right here, I think he's got an application in.
Okay.
Need to check on that.
We also need that's your resignation letter from human, um.
Yes.
Relations.
Pitt County Human Relations.
Right. So, therefore we need someone to board to step up to the plate.
And I'll let you all handle that and then I want to circle back around to ours.
Ms. Robinson, will you want to serve on that? Since you brought up.
Right now, I want to serve, I would love to be appointed to ours, our board. I don't know if that would be.
It wouldn't be a conflict.
I would love to serve on ours.
The chairman of Greenville is chairman of the county. The secretary of the city is secretary of the county.
Right.
They're on both boards.
Yes, and I'm already on the, on the library board. I'm already on Mid Eastern.
This, the second.
I don't want to get somebody else from serving on some.
Mr. Moore, will you consider human relation committee?
I would get back with you.
Okay. All right.
They meet this, this Thursday. I have three meetings this Thursday.
This coming Thursday.
Were you, were you attending that one?
I, I had, I had to make a choice between Gideon's, Human Relations Board. I've been at Gideon 18 years and I'm in charge of byproduct distribution. That's my first priority. I had to, I had to make a choice between the two. Father comes first. I had to resign.
Mr. Moore is.
No, I would get back with him.
Okay.
Okay.
Just doing it by consent.
What time do they meet? What time is it made?
Uh, 6:00.
6:00, but it's once, is it once a month?
Yes.
Once a month? 6:00 on a, if, what?
They're trying to decide what night they meet on because a lot of conflicts we have. It'll change next month, December, it'll change to a different time next month.
Ruth?
I wanted to, Mr. Moore, you're gonna check into that and get that?
Yeah, I'll get back.
Okay. On our own Human Relations Board, council created it. We've got a set of bylaws, but we need to decide on specific information. So with that said, I will get that specific information out to you all on what you all need to decide, and that will include members, the membership. And also circling back to our other boards. Don, would you get a list together, work with Brian, Evan, of our openings and the qualifications for those, so that we can remind council what's available in case y'all know folks, or folks in the community know folks that will serve? So we'll get that out to you.
Okay. Next up is a report from our town attorney.
Yes, sir. Now that we've had our election, the statutes require that we have our organizational meeting at the December, regular December meeting. And of course, at the organizational meeting, we have our oath of office issued. I normally asked you at the November meeting if there's any judges you would like for me to contact to come over to issue the oath. Any, any suggestions, any recommendations on, on judges?
I'll let you know as far as I'm concerned, King.
Okay.
Oh, Judge Hazelton.
Hazelton, okay. And it's been, yeah, just if you, we've got a little leeway here, but there'll be a lot of other towns that will be calling and asking. I don't know that, I think we have maybe one other town that has a meeting on our night. So if you think of somebody, just let me know. I'll be glad to contact them. And I've got one matter for closed session.
Okay.
Mayor Patience Hines, and we also, of course, therefore have a closed session on our...
Okay, we do have a closed session, all right. I'm going to start, I'm in with Mr. Moore.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Smith?
Oh, yes.
Oh, oh, back up.
Yes, I would like to thank the citizens for allowing me to serve another four-year term. And anything that I can do, please just let me know, and I will always do like I always have done, place my best foot forward. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
I will echo that. It's an honor to serve again.
Ms. Robinson?
I'd like to thank the citizens for their participation in the voting process. All citizens that voted, you know, they're interested in that town enough to help choose the leadership of it. And no matter what the decision is tomorrow, I will still be here to serve the community of Winterfield, even in this position or whatever. And I do appreciate the opportunity to serve.
Mr. Moore?
Mr. Moore? And myself, like Mark said, I echo what Ms. Robinson said. I just appreciate everybody coming out to vote, you know. It's an honor to see people believe in you, believe in what you're doing, and coming out and putting their vote in, casting their vote for you. Also, too, I would like to thank Mr. Rice and Ms. Hawkins, both for being in the audience today. Appreciate y'all stepping up, pursuing a chance to be a part of our membership. And y'all both did very well. And also, too, to even Tucker, you know, I appreciate him stepping up and, you know, being a part of the process. And that's what you got to do, people. If you want change in your town, you got to step up and be part of the process. You can talk about it all you want, but until you step up, all you're doing is talking. So I appreciate anybody that steps up to the plate. And Ms. Terry?
No comments.
Okay. All right, with that being said, Mr. Attorney, we have a closed session?
We do, yes, sir. So we just need a vote to close the open session. We'll open the closed session and closed session.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Moore. Second. Second by Mr. Moore. A motion is on the table that we go in closed session. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Going to closed session. What's that?